The first item on the agenda is the roll call. Joe Nevs,
Here.
Richard Valley,
Here.
Doug Verboon,
Here.
Rusty Robinson,
Here.
Richard Fagundis,
Here.
Mark Kyris.
Here.
The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Move on now to approval of the minutes, approval of minutes from the special meeting July 29th, 2024. Move by Mr. Robinson.
Second, Ms. Chair.
Second by Mr. Dinesh, Madam President.
Joe Nevs,
Yes.
Richard Valley,
All right.
Doug Verboon,
Yes.
Rusty Robinson,
Yes.
Richard Fagundis,
Yes.
Mark Kyris.
Yes.
Six in favor. We have approved it as presented. So right now, next we have item five, which is consent counter, and there was no consent counter because we have made no action as of yet. So we're going to go to item six, which is regular items, and it'll be item A, overview of the Mid-Kings River GSP and adopted policies. And I would revert to Chuck Kenny.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For this item, I would like to just provide you with a brief overview of the Mid-Kings River GSA. As you are all aware, Sigma became law in 2014, and the Mid-Kings River GSA was formed in 2016. Since then, the Mid-Kings River has prepared three groundwater sustainability plans. The first two, which were submitted to the state for review, were both rejected by the State Department of Water Resources, or DWR. Following that submittal of the first two plans, the state water board became involved in the process, starting in March of 2023. And in October of 23, the state board issued a staff report on the Tulare Lake Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan deficiencies. At the same time that the state water board has been working in the basin, the Mid-Kings River GSA has worked with the other GSAs within the Tulare Lake Sub Basin to create a revised plan, which would cover the entire Tulare Lake Sub Basin. That's kind of tweaking as we speak. That revised plan was submitted to the state for review in May of this year and is still undergoing their review. Believe that we have Amer Hussain in the audience with GeoSynTech, and he has prepared a presentation to be able to give to you on a very high-level overview of what's within the most recent GSP. Let me share the screen here.
Good morning, Amer.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Welcome to Kings County.
Thank you. Yeah, been here a few times. So for anyone who doesn't know me, as Chuck mentioned, I'm Amer Hussain. I'm the engineer that's working on the draft document. I'm going to go through a 1,200-page document in about four slides. I'm going to apologize to Joe because he's already seen this thing a couple of times, so.
Well, Amer, hang on a second. So just make sure you explain that this board had done nothing yet. This was already an existing.
This was an existing document that was completed in April. And a draft of this document was submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board for their comments. And where we stand right now with the state board is they have looked at it. We originally had a meeting scheduled for the 1st of August. The day before that meeting occurred, the state board asked to move that meeting, and now we are looking at September 4th roughly for that meeting. So in about two weeks or so, we'll have some comments. They've given us some initial comments, which I'll talk about at the end.
Thank you.
So as I started to say, this is a 1,200-page document. I'm doing it in about six or seven slides. And there's a lot of details in the document. And again, this is a draft document and is currently being revised and subject to change and public input as well. So the first thing I want to talk about is the fact that we've got these three aquifers. There's the shallow aquifer, and certainly all of this is very pertinent to the Mid-Kings River GSA because you have all three aquifers in this area, which we call the A-zone. And if you hear me refer to some of these things, I just wanted to make sure that we just go through some definitions. This is usually about the initial 70 to 100 feet. It varies across the sub-basin. It's this upper aquifer of perch water, and then in the, what we call above the clay, the deeper zone is the B-zone. That refers to everything else below the A and the corcoran clay. And then below the corcoran, we've been referring to as the C-zone. There are more aquifers, or there are more clay layers, I should say, than just those three, but that's how we've been kind of quantifying the large overview of the entire sub-basin. We do use, the last bullet on there is to inform the state that we're currently using a method called using satellite evapotranspiration data to determine our groundwater pumping. There's an advantage to using ET. You get a lot of data. You don't have to spend, you don't have to spend a ton of money on meters. The downside is we don't know which aquifer we're pulling from, right? So that is one of the areas that we're going to address in this particular document. Chuck, next slide. Okay, so we had to come up with water levels, a subsidence value, and a groundwater quality. We're going to start with each one of those three and work our way through. And please stop me if I use any terms. I realize you don't all live and breathe Sigma in the last few years like some of us have been. So if I say anything and you have any questions, feel free to jump in at any time. I'm going to try to go through this fairly quick. For groundwater levels, what we're trying to do is protect our shallow wells. And that means the domestic wells, and that's what the state is looking for us to do, is to ensure that if wells are going dry, the water levels that we're selecting is protective of the users and uses of groundwater. For that, what we decided to look at, because we don't have a good database everywhere across the sub-basin of all the existing wells, we used some existing databases that the state had put together, which is called the Oscar Database. That's OSWCR that you see there, the acronym. And then we used a modification of that from the USGS, the US Geological Survey. And then we went further and looked at Kings County permit information and further tried to refine that. We also took into account wells that had gone dry, or at least that we think had gone dry since 2015. 2015 is where Sigma was implemented, and that's our cutoff. So we try to look at wells that potentially had gone dry and remove those from the database as well. And that's how we came up with our initial database of wells. We still think there's a lot of work to be done on those databases. And what you'll see is that a well registration program is one of our action items that'll be coming up is across the sub-basin. What we had to then do is set what we call interim milestones. That's the levels that we want to be at between now and 2040. We also had to set the measurable objectives. That's the value that we want to keep the water at. And I'm going to go through the exact numbers with you on the next slide. And then we had to set the minimum thresholds. If the water drops below the minimum thresholds, that's when we start to have what we call undesirable results, and that's what we want to avoid. In this case, it was going to be that we want to protect 90% of our shallow wells, at least 90% of our shallow wells, okay? That's not to say 10% are going to go dry. The potential exists if they went all the way down to that level. I'm sorry, did you have a question? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure. So.
Brian's on top. It's on that chair outside.
So for the A-zone, what we set is we looked at water levels. And we said we want to keep our water levels at or above the 2015 levels, and we want to avoid dropping more than 20 feet from the 2015 water levels in the A-zone. In the B-zone, again, our measurable objectives is that 2015 water level, and we want to stay above 30 feet. We looked at long-term hydrographs of the wells. We looked at how much they went up and down. We looked at what's occurring in the aquifer, and we saw a trend between that wet-dry cycle where it varied about 30 feet. So we want to maintain, now, it's not the same 30 feet. Obviously, water levels have been going down, so I just want to make that clear. And then in this, below the clay, in the C-zone, we basically said it's not a water level so much, it's an amount of subsidence that's going to control how much groundwater we can pump out of that C-zone. So, and again, please remember that this document was written as a combined document for the entire sub-basin, and there are areas in the sub-basin that are experiencing a lot more subsidence than is occurring here in Mid-Kings River. So in order to do that, we were going to try and protect our shallow wells in the A and the B-zone. We're going to mitigate any shallow wells that go dry for level reasons, right? If our levels drop below, if your well fails for whatever other reason, your pump went bad, that's not the GSA's problem, right? And then we were going to collect mitigation funding to avoid those types of impacts and provide, if we have to, pumping restrictions in order to avoid those impacts. Next slide. So for subsidence, that was water levels for subsidence. The things that we were trying to protect are our deep municipal wells, our levees, and our canal systems. We want to make sure that when we looked at, we looked at all the variety of different infrastructure, roads, pipelines, other things across the entire sub-basin. And basically, we determined that if you control for these three items, the rest of them won't be impacted, that they can absorb more subsidence than what we can see in these three items. Of these three types of infrastructure, I should say. And then we basically tried to evaluate, you know, who the users and users are of that, and that would be impacted by subsidence. And again, what we want to do is reduce the rate of subsidence. And we want to essentially hit a level by the end of 2040, so that we're minimizing subsidence between now and then, and that we max our minimum threshold for subsidence would be limited to six feet at a maximum. So that was what we agreed to as a sub-basin. At the end, one of the GSAs thought that they should want to go with a higher value of subsidence in some areas. And so one of the GSAs is writing their document to basically allow for 10 feet of subsidence in a portion of their sub-basin, of their GSA. So minimize and avoid subsidence. That's our measurable objective. And then our minimum threshold is six feet for Mid-Kings River GSA. All right, I don't see any questions, so I'm going to keep going.
So you said six feet of subsidence was agreed upon prior to any discussion of, or failed discussions for 10 feet of allowable subsidence?
Yeah, that was the number that the sub-basin had agreed to, and that's where the document was prepared for the maximum allowed of subsidence. Within the last few weeks before we were going to submit this document, one of the GSAs felt like, hey, they, based on their evaluation, they felt like that subsidence values could be deeper because there's no infrastructure in that area that could be impacted. Those values, I should tell you, have not been, we haven't received any feedback yet from the state even on that six feet, and they have some concerns even at six.
So, okay, just for clarification, so the six feet was agreed upon by the former members of the Mid-Kings GSA?
That was where we were at the draft, yes.
Okay, so then when you say the different GSA wanted 10 feet, did you just say that, that that argument, for lack of a better word, for 10 feet was based on no negative impact to infrastructure, including flood control levees?
In their particular GSA, they felt like their particular GSA, in a portion of it, not the entire GSA, but a portion of their particular GSA, they could have a deeper and a higher value of subsidence because there was very little impacts occurring in that area.
South of Corcoran?
Yes.
So flood control levees, south of Corcoran and west of Corcoran, were deemed to not be impacted negatively by 10 feet of subsidence?
That was their evaluation, yeah.
Don't we already have documentation that subsidence has lowered that flood control levy at least two times in the last 10 years?
Yeah, the levy for Corcoran, that value would have stayed at six. And let me just be clear, because this issue will come up. It's six feet from 2023. So that was, you know, we basically said, look, all the subsidence that's already occurred, between 2015 and 2023 has already occurred. We've already absorbed that. We were going to allow for six more feet.
Six more feet after the governor funded us with roughly $22 million to raise that flood control levy?
Yeah.
So after that, you're saying six more feet after that?
That was the value that we were discussing, yes. Again, these were draft documents. They had not been finalized.
Okay, but in a draft document, if you're going to discuss allowing for six more feet of subsidence specifically to that flood control levy, were there discussions on who is going to pay for that to raise it up? Because when the governor came during the flood in 2023 and gave the money, he said, "Don't ask for any more money."
Yeah, that was a real sticking point, was that discussion right there. And that was one of the reasons that we didn't come to be able to finalize that document.
Yeah, he told me that when we were walking that levy during the flood. That's my district.
Yeah, that was, that was obviously a concern of who's going to pay if we're going to allow that much more subsidence in that area. You know, how are we going to pay for that?
Do you know who paid for it prior to the governor funding us with the threat of flood prior to the actual flood?
I understand that a portion of the money came from the residents of the city and the jail.
Yeah, a lot of the money did.
Yeah.
A lot of elderly, a lot of folks on fixed incomes, a lot of retired veterans, a lot of poor people without wealth had their property taxes increased, including mine, to pay for that. So that was part of the discussion of six feet?
The, well, the discussion of the six feet, of course, involved how we were going to pay for that and mitigate for any problems that were caused. So that was certainly part of the, it obviously was part of the discussion of how we were going to pay for it, who was going to pay for it.
No, I know. But even at six feet, was the discussion, did anyone in the discussion said, "Oh, we'll let the people of Corcoran pay for that again"?
I don't, that was, it was not the intent of the group to have Corcoran, the city of Corcoran pay. That issue certainly came up, and we discussed it quite a bit. You know, as a group of trying to figure out, hey, how are we going to pay for this? And who, more importantly, who's going to pay for this?
Yeah, so I wonder how that ramps up when you go from six feet to 10 feet requesting on the conversations that he's going to pay for that.
Yeah, just to be clear, that 10 feet would not be the levy in Corcoran. That area would have stayed at six. But again, this is still all discussions that are still taking place and still need to be ironed out, and who's going to pay for it is a big part of it.
So, just maybe two more, Mr. Chairman. So going back to 2023, after we got the funding to raise that and keep the community of Corcoran from going underwater, do you have a fixed number of the height of that levy? Or are we waiting for it to come down more and then start, go from six feet from there?
We didn't get into that level of detail just yet, you know, for, at the portion of the document where we were at.
Okay, because you know there's recorded height of it, because
Yes.
just sinking two feet, all right, when that levy dropped two feet, and we were made aware that that levy had sunk two feet due to subsidence, and the community of Corcoran was threatening to go under six feet of water, we're talking downtown Corcoran.
Yeah.
We're talking my hometown of Corcoran. That, that two feet is a lot right there. So would six feet of subsidence in that area, you know, I don't know if this is a dumb question, but would that mean the top layer of that levy drops, protective levy drops six feet as well?
Yeah, but keep in mind that the ground around it is not staying the same height either, though. So subsidence doesn't occur, you know, just in one small area. It does occur across a very large area, and that was part of the discussion was, what would flood? If six more feet of subsidence occurred, what would the flood look like based on what we know is happening and pumping that's occurring east of Corcoran as well?
Okay, because just in my mind and living it, and just knowing the sinking of two feet of that levy, equating out to over $21 million in taxpayer money that we had to go get from the state to raise that levy, and then I visualize the operation of, you know, dirt being moved, the trucks 24/7, the impacts to the community, how quick people had to come together and work to raise that levy. I don't, I just go from two feet to six feet, and just imagining the, how much more money, how much more expensive that bill is, and how much more work and infrastructure and logistics to raise that to protect the community goes into that. So that's, and I only ask these questions early on now in the draft because that's something that's very important to me, and that's something I'm going to keep a radar on.
Yeah, I understand. I understand, yeah. I'm going to keep going, Mr. Chair. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this map shows the subsidence values, and I'm going to apologize. I know for all of you sitting in the audience, it's probably a little hard to see. But this, the salmon-colored areas are where the highest levels of subsidence are occurring. This is, this is our subsidence value since 2015. And again, I'll also remind you that there's a cutout right above Corcoran that is not in the Tulare Lake Sub Basin. That's part of the Tulie Sub Basin. But that kind of gives you an idea. The white that you see in the middle is that this is all based on satellite INSAR data, and that is areas where the state has not reported satellite data to us for a variety of different reasons in that area. But you can see very little subsidence to the south area of the sub-basin, and obviously higher values to the east, towards the Corcoran area as well. You can, obviously, on the top of the map is where the Mid-Kings River GSA is. Everyone always stops to look at this map. I've given you a little extra time just to take a look at if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for him. So I'm looking at the map, and it shows that that north end of the county where the Mid-Kings River GSA is involved, and that's what we're here talking about.
Right.
You know, I think the important factor also is, is that everything slopes north to south.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So the first initial impact is going to occur on the north end of the county, or the north end of the area, correct? So as subsidence occurs, as water drops, and it's in the aquifers and stuff, I mean, are we seeing a higher value of subsidence, I guess if you will, in that northern part? Because the county does, in the way the water travels from north to south, is there a significant involvement in that? I mean, because the entire area geographically is not flat, right?
Right, right, right.
So it slopes north to south.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not.
So I guess my question is, you're showing that the subsidence is occurring more up in the Mid-Kings River GSA area, and that's what we're discussing, right? In that salmon area, is that because of the way the water flows down towards the south?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what I wanted.
I'm not sure I understood your question completely, but, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, so that's one of the questions that I've, you know, been asked, and they're like, hey, you know, we're up north. This goes south. If there's going to be any dry well issues, they're going to occur on the north end because the way the sub-basin is sloped, you know, I've heard terms used as it's like a bucket, right? As you go down, the bottom of the bucket, you know, the top depletes, the bottom doesn't. So that's what I wanted, just if you could touch on that.
This, the subsidence is occurring where the pumping below the clay is the most extensive. You know, you can, you can see wherever we have those deeper wells below the clay. And we do have, since, you know, what's occurred in the last 25 years, we definitely have deep wells below the clay in a large area of the sub-basin. So we have to deal with that, and there's, all of our recharge below the clay is occurring from the east. And we've got to work with our neighbors on the east as well. But the, it's not, it's not the surface topography that's causing it. It literally is the amount of pumping that happens to be occurring in those individual areas.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think I answered your question. Yeah, okay. All right, next slide. Okay, so management strategies for subsidence that we discuss in the document. And again, as I said a few minutes ago, it's pumping restrictions because all of our recharge below the clay is coming from the east primarily. There's very little, you know, surface recharge below the clay. And so what we are left with here, being at the lake bottom, is that we are looking um, is that we are, um, looking at having to do some kind of pumping restrictions below the clay. Um, and again, when I say this, I don't, I'm not just talking about Mid Kings River. This is for the entire sub basin, of course. And then we need to have some kind of mitigation programs, which you guys referred to already, to protect the levies and, and canals and any of those deep in municipal wells that may be impacted. Um, and then make sure that we're monitoring very carefully the rate of subsidence and making sure that we're actually slowing down that rate of subsidence. Alright, next slide. Uh, water quality. So in the water quality, I'll go through this quickly. The water quality, essentially what the state said is for the GSAs that you are not responsible for water quality impacts that occurred before twenty fifteen. But you are responsible if pumping is making them worse. So we're gonna work with some of our, um, local agencies. We're gonna work with, um, the, uh, Airgate Lands Program and others. Um, uh, CB Salts to make sure that we're coordinating our efforts with them. Um, what we basically have set is that our, um, minimum threshold is going to be the water quality objectives or the maximum contaminant levels for, um, for each individual compounds. The compounds you see listed are the ones that were identified as, as, um, areas where, or compounds that had exceeded those values um, or could, you know, in some percentage of the wells already, and that's why they were selected. Um, in areas where we already passed the MCL, for example, um, um, we said basically it was a twenty fifteen water, uh, twenty fifteen concentration plus twenty percent. And the state did not like that. That's one of the comments that they've told us, um, um, informally that, that they're going to comment on the, on the September fourth meeting. But again, it was on a draft, so we have a chance to change that. Um, our management strategies include more testing of, of areas in the domestic or the rural areas. We're protecting our domestic wells and making sure that we have some shallow monitoring wells in that area. Um, and then, uh, you know, if the monitoring does show that we have a problem, making sure that we take some action at that point. And those actions are laid out in detail in, in the document as well. Alright, next slide. So for the Mid Kings River GSA, I didn't obviously list all the PMAs for every single surrounding, uh, GSA, but this list that you see on the screen, um, is what we have included in the draft document. A well registration program, we've already talked about that, that's already underway. Uh, a well metering policy. The groundwater allocations. Um, a funding source for the Mid Kings River GSA. Uh, a shallow well mitigation policy. Drilling a whole bunch of, uh, additional monitoring wells and expanding our monitoring network for water quality as well as subsidence. And then building a series of basins, looking at, um, additional areas where we could get some basins. A recharge policy, um, looking at how to improve some of our, uh, water delivery systems. And then, um, some kind of land, I, we call it land following, but we'll probably re, you know, we'll probably title it something like, um, um, repurposing or something along those lines in, in the final, um, document. But that's what, those are the, the projects and, and management actions that we are looking at for Mid Kings River. I didn't, obviously there's a whole lot of details that go into each of these. Um, I will say that the Mid Kings River Plan and their PMAs were much more detailed and well thought out than, you know, some of the other, um, GSAs had a lot more general type of discussion, but, but, uh, Mid Kings went into a fair amount of detail of how we were gonna actually accomplish some of these programs.
Um, so when you say land following, are you talking about, uh, from a, a farmer voluntarily? Um, put fallow in their land? Are you talking about a body directing a farmer to fallow?
No, voluntary. Yeah, definitely voluntary. Yeah, 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 definitely voluntary. Yeah, yeah, it was strictly a voluntary program. But, but, you know, having some kind of, of, um, incentives and other things in place, funding, how we, how, how would a repurposing, it, I, we call it following, but it really is a repurposing program of what, what could we do with that land? And, and what would be the incentives to, to repurpose that land, if any? So, you know, how would we fund that? And, and that's all the details that still need to be worked out. That was literally last on the list, cause it was one of the last things we added for the Mid Kings River. And, and we don't have all of our details worked out on that particular one, but that's, you don't have to have everything for the GSP. It just means we gotta continue to work on it. If, if this is the direction that Mid Kings decides to go. Alright, I'm gonna keep going. Uh, next slide. Okay, uh, schedule. So we were supposed to get feedback on the first of this, of August. Now it's gonna be September fourth. We're gonna take that feedback and work with Chuck and decide exactly what the, uh, revised draft is going to look like. Um, I'm not gonna commit you guys to any schedule. That's, I, I took out some dates that we had in there originally. Because you, you all need to decide what you wanna do as, as a, as a, you know, as a new board. Um, we had a, we, we were assuming you were gonna probably do a thirty day comment period, cause a lot of the other GSAs were doing that. And then we probably would finalize it, take it, you know, after the comment period's over, we need another thirty days to probably pull it together and, and bring it back to the board for final approval. But one date that I would remind you all is that our probationary period for the Tulare Lake Sub Basin one year is on the sixteenth of April next year, of twenty-five. Um, the way the Sigma regulations are written, you are, you can be on probation for a minimum of one year. They can always extend it. But they don't have to. They can go ahead and say you aren't making enough progress and the state's gonna write their own plan. What they would call an interim plan. And we wanna avoid that under any circumstances, and so does everybody else in the sub basin. So as we start to work and move forward, I would, you know, caution you that we, we absolutely positively need to avoid that deadline and get this plan approved. And the sooner we get out of probation, um, the happier all of us will be.
I have a question. So plan approved by the State Water Resource Control Board?
Yes.
And then we have to have a funding policy in place to be accepted to get off probation, or can we get off without a two eighteen?
You will not get off of probation unless you can show that we have a funding mechanism to maintain the GSA and fund all of those PMAs that we have listed on there.
Okay, next question would be, so there's five GSAs. If we get one to meet the requirements of the state, can just one basin get off a probation, or is it the whole sub basin as a whole?
That's a good question. Um, the, the plan right now is we had one plan. And they basically said that the, what they call a good actor provision under Sigma, um, does not apply unless you have an approved GSP. And, you know, um, I'm not sure honestly how the state, if, if, if we turn in five different GSPs, is the state just gonna approve four of them and say, yeah, you four are okay? That's a, they haven't, they haven't had to do that, and, and it's an unknown right now because we, you know, this, all of this is new. Um, I think your, you know, Mid Kings approach should be to get their plan done, get it approved, and then fight that battle when you need to.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, I think there's one last slide after this. Oh, that's it. Nope.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alright.
Do you have any, anybody have any questions for Mayor? Bill, you probably heard us already. Rest of your write notes?
Write notes. I, I have one question. So the, uh, the judge's ruling didn't reset the time clock at all?
That's, um,
In regards to the wells?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's all, that's hard to say. It, it, it might reset it for those particular issues, the, the metering, the wells, those types of things. But it doesn't reset, or at least my understanding, I'm not a lawyer. Um, it did not necessarily reset the probationary issue. And, and our probationary deadline is still April sixteenth. And until we hear something different and more definitive than that, um, I would keep that date in mind. Now, it might mean that we would adjust some of the other requirements, our, our metering program and other things that, that we might do at a local, um, Mid Kings level to, you know, to match new dates. Um, that's fine, but I think keeping the GSP approval and the probationary requirements separate, I think are gonna be important, cause it didn't, in my understanding is it doesn't, uh, um, reset the April sixteenth deadline. Unless somebody knows differently.
I think the question goes, he asks is about the Farm Bureau lawsuit.
Yeah.
Only thing that really did was all the probationary stuff stays in place, and we, we don't have to monitor our groundwater extraction until today. Unless the judge rules something different today. So push that off thirty days from the last time they met. They're, they're in a meeting right now. So we'll hear what they have to say. But everything else still stays the same. We still gotta report our, uh, self-report every month. And we have to pay up by December with the state, correct? That's how I see it. That's how I read it. And you have, you have until December to, I believe, October, December to, uh, registry well with the state. But we still have asked, Mid King just has asked the registry well with them too, but there's no office yet. So we'll get there when we get there.
Uh, again, you would wanna keep an eye on that lawsuit and, and exactly what you just said, um, you know, Chairman Vabun, that, that today, depending on what the ruling might be today. Um, I haven't heard, so I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Mark, you got questions? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, Mayor. I've, I've got some more for you. As you heard, uh, some of the GSAs are now formulating their own plans individually, not a basin wide. Uh, what Amir was talking about was one basin wide plan that had been drafted, and that's what the state's currently reviewing. So it's likely that the Mid Kings GSA will have to take portions of that and get it revised for specifically Mid Kings GSA, uh, going forward as it appears that each GSA will have their own plan going forward. Um, I would like to now quickly go over the five policies which the Mid Kings River GSA has previously approved so that your board is up to speed on the history of the Mid Kings River GSA. Uh, the first two policies which were adopted in October of twenty-two included the active groundwater well mon, meter policy and the groundwater well registration policy. The active groundwater well meter policy required property owners to install flow meters on all groundwater wells by January first of twenty twenty-four. The groundwater well registration policy required property owners to register their wells that are on their property within the Mid Kings River GSA by May first of twenty-three. As part of the registration process, it would require property owners to allow GSA staff to enter their property to inspect and verify compliance with Mid River Kings, Mid Kings River GSA policies. Uh, the next policy that the Mid Kings River GSA approved was the initial private uh, groundwater recharge policy, which was adopted in June of twenty-three. This policy established a mechanism where a property owner could register private groundwater recharge efforts and get credits against future pumping within the groundwater, within the GSA area. Uh, the fourth policy that was adopted was the shallow, shallow well mitigation policy, which was adopted in February of twenty twenty-four. This policy established a mechanism to assist property owners of domestic wells which went dry due to the lowering of groundwater levels, so that they can get a replacement well when and if funding is available. Uh, the last policy that has been established by the Mid Kings River GSA is the groundwater pumping cap policy, which was adopted in March of twenty twenty-four. Uh, this policy established the maximum amount of water which could be pumped within the Mid Kings River GSA on a per acre basis and was effective as of April first of this year. Uh, the next agenda item, uh, to be discussed today is going to talk about the formation of stakeholder committee. And it'd be my recommendation that once the committee is established, that we take all five of these adopted policies uh, back be through, uh, to get stakeholder input, uh, for further discussion and consideration. And
So those are adopted policies.
Those are adopted policies by the Mid Kings.
On the past Mid King GSA, so we have to choose whether we're gonna adopt them or not as well, correct?
Those are existing policies that are still in effect today.
Still in effect today, okay.
Um,
So can we, is that gonna be on our webpage that they exist today?
They are on our webpage right now.
I know that when I was told, the first notification I got from the previous Mid King GSA was, you know, it was a default, cause I didn't follow the rules. And I didn't, wasn't aware of the rules because I never was notified. So I think that there was a big disconnect from the community to the, the board. So as long as we don't punish people that haven't complied yet, uh, give them time to get the meters on. I, I know I bought meters on my own in February, March. I just got them two weeks ago and installed them, uh, last week.
I'm not aware of anybody that's been punished, and I am a single person working multiple things. Um, I would like to encourage those that don't have meters to get meters. And if you have yet to register your wells in the Mid Kings, please come to my office to register. Um, so we can continue that effort, but, uh, I do believe it'd be good to take all these policies back through the stakeholder committee once it's formed, uh, to get input and consideration from them and be able to bring that consideration back in front of your board for a discussion.
Okay, is there any more questions before we move on? Okay, we'll move on now to item B, which is a discussion on the information, formation of the stakeholder committees. Uh, so staff.
Yes, thank you. Um, on this item, uh, I am bringing this before you today to discuss and get direction from your board on the formation of the stakeholder committee. Um, in discussions with board members, there's a desire to establish a stakeholder committee. But in order to create a resolution to establish the stakeholder committee, I first need your input as to how you desire the formation of the stakeholder committee and the makeup of the committee members. Um, in order to provide you with a potential starting point for discussion, I'd like to offer the following potential makeup of the committee as far as members. It'd be my recommendation that it be an eleven-member, uh, committee and that all members either be property owners of land within the Mid Kings River GSA or be leasing the land within the Mid Kings River GSA. I was thinking that for six of the members, that each board member could appoint one member from their district or city. And then the remaining five members could be voted upon by the entire board and represent one of the following categories. Um, I've got agriculture, uh, agricultural grower, uh, agricultural processor, a municipal water system, disadvantaged community, water district, irrigation district, conservation district. Um, those are just some ideas. You don't, you can take them, leave them, change them, modify them, grow them. Um, I, I just need some direction as to what desire your board has to be able to formulate, so I can get a resolution prepared. And, um, if your board is in agreement with the makeup of the members of the committee as I've presented, then we'll prepare a resolution in that sense, um, to come back before you at your next regularly scheduled meeting to approve the formation of the committee, and then we can begin accepting applications for a membership following that meeting. And, uh, I would think that we would have a thirty day open window period for members to apply. And we'd bring it back to your subsequent meeting to vote and establish the members of that committee.
And I think after we see who applies, then we can fill in a blank for the appointments for areas that weren't covered in the application process. Would that be alright?
Can you?
So, so we, we have fifteen members that apply and, and they're mostly on one type of a makeup. You know, say they're all permanent crop, maybe they're all row crop. I, I wanna get a, a good variety of people. The people have shallow wells, deeper wells, medium wells, permanent crop, uh, row crop, access to surface water, no access to surface water, so we have a good makeup. Everybody gets represented equally in, in the industry. Uh, we have a lot of, a couple of big industry people in the community that, uh, take a lot of water.
Right. And so I was recommending eleven. It can be whatever number you want.
So, this is for council. Can we, can we have that committee, if they wanna sit on here with us?
To sit on the board with you?
Yeah, so we have seven members.
Um, I'm gonna have to, I can look into that further, cause that's not clear to me at this point.
Okay, so at this point, we'll go for discussion, ideas. Mark, you got any ideas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I agree. I think when we go back in the previous months and we look at, um, the concerns that have been expressed out there, right? The stakeholder committee has always been the number one topic that's been, um, talked about, discussed, um, caused a lot of frustration with. So, um, you know, Chuck, thank you for taking that on. I think, I think this is critical um, to give them and those stakeholders an opportunity to, um, be involved in the process, have a say. Um, I would like to see if it is all possible to include, um, as you stated, uh, a stakeholder member on the committee um, of the GSA on, on the board, um, to be the spokesman for the committee. Um, I think that's critical, but, um, But, um, yeah, I, I'm in favor. I think I, I, I agree with the fact that let's get it out, find out who's interested. And then from there, we can, you know, make the selection on, on, on those individuals that can serve best.
If, Led Robinson?
No, I just want to see, I just want to see a good diversity on the board. I, I want to see everybody represented in terms of the various factors, whether it's the tree guys, the row guys, the permanent guys, much of what you already said. I just think that, uh, that's what was lacking before was just input at all, but it has to be a diverse group. And whether we hit that at eleven or a different number. How'd you come up with eleven, by the way?
Pulled it out of a hat. I was looking at other committees and, uh, seeing what other committee sizes were and it appeared to be an average of where they landed.
Um, as, as counsel, I would suggest that the board consider the ability for this committee to, um, to achieve a quorum. Oftentimes when you get a very, very large, um, body, it's very difficult to achieve a quorum and it becomes problematic, so. Um, eleven does seem like a reasonable number to me, large enough to have broad representation, but not so large that it becomes difficult to conduct business. Um, it doesn't mean you can't go more or less, um, just some things for you to consider.
And, and I'd like to add, if your board chooses, we could also have alternates for each of those positions so that to ensure that we have a quorum. It, it would help.
Very good. Led Rollick?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, now I'm in favor of the, uh, stakeholder committee and, and getting the input from the. People who are living and working this, uh, daily as well. And again, as we, most of us said, uh, three weeks ago at the very first meeting, this is not. Uh, another job we were looking to take up, another committee, we wear multiple hats, we have many committees and so I think, uh, we were. Um, very clear in the fact that, um, we wanted to work, uh, with the folks, with the farmers and, and the people in the ag industry to. Make sure we get that ultimate goal, which is get off the state's radar, get off probation and move forward and, and, uh, be a stronger, uh, uh, Kings County. My only question would be, uh, Mr. Kenny, have you thought of, um, with some farmers who have land, um, around the county? Are you fine if, let's say, one, one of the other GSAs, uh, have a stakeholders committee and someone is sitting on that committee? That wouldn't prevent them of their landowner in this GSA from sitting on the stakeholder committee as well?
No, it wouldn't. My, my recommendation was whether they're landowner or at least. He on, within the Mid-Kings River, they at least have buy-in within our GSA then.
Okay, because I think that we might cross that path too.
Yeah.
We're gonna.
I, I think also we need, we need a good balance of, of, uh, representation here and alter the alternative, alternate. Deal where it gives a better chance of more voice. So, I don't know if that's an option or. That's the way, way I look. The more we, the more voice we have, the better information we're going to have on this. Led Neves?
Yeah, uh, the three other areas I think I'd like to add are livestock growers as well, um, as well as potable water versus irrigation water. Um, and then, uh, I would like to see a well driller, um, if possible, because I think. The well drillers have a much better perspective of the aquifers. Uh, they have knowledge about the geography and I think they will serve this, uh, committee well.
Perfect.
So I would. Like a dairy, dairy member or even, uh, say lambs or sheep or any?
Horses, I, you know, in, any kind of livestock, because livestock is one of those that you can't measure through an EC. Um, so it, it just depends, you know, um, milking goats are going to be different than milking bovines. And so you have to be able to understand the difference between livestock and growing crops. So I think it's important that we have a livestock, um, representative and again, the potable water. Is for that well user that is just using that water for drinking purposes, um, and not necessarily irrigation. Um, I think the state calls it the minimus use of two acre feet, but I think it's important that they have representation irregardless. Um, even though they don't meet the threshold of six hundred thousand acre feet in a year. I'm, you know.
Yeah.
Our six hundred gallons, six hundred thousand gallons. Um, and then again, I think the well driller is going to be a very important part of that discussion. Um, um, I don't know of any of them that live and own property, so we might have to deviate from that a little bit. But I would like to see a well driller that has experience, um, you know, boring holes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, especially for a variety of reasons, so.
I'm aware of one that is at least within the Mid-Kings GSA.
Yeah, see, and whether they'd be available and whether they'd be willing are the other two questions you'd have to ask. But I think it's important that we get through the well registration, uh, we, we have a database of folks that are, are used to the geology.
Yes.
And so they need to have that knowledge base. And whether you call them a users group, an advisory or whatever designation you give them.
Okay.
I think that would be the, um, the, uh, expertise that's missing.
Thank you. Do that. Can I open up to the public comment at this point?
Sure.
Would anybody in the audience like to come forward and offer any other suggestions that we may have missed? Mr. Neves, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, members of the committee, my name's Todd Neves, uh, residence is one th- one three five eight four Francisco Drive in Hanford, California. Um, appreciate your time and effort here today, uh, taking this, taking this on. This is going to be one hell of a, uh, uh, you know, a chore here. Uh, the next till April sixteenth. My request as a landowner would be, uh, going to Amir's, uh, comments of, I, I believe it's Good Character Cause. Or Good Actor. Um, I think just by this step that you're making here today. Shows that we're, we're trying to, uh, move forward here, so I would request that instead of waiting till April sixteenth of twenty-five. I would, I, I, I'm sure the Board of Supervisors works with the state, you know, often. And I think we have a working relationship with the state and, uh, with DWR, so I would request to immediately. Uh, ask for a one-year extension. I would go to April sixteen twenty-six. We're showing that we're making efforts. We don't want to try to cram this down, uh, this April. It's, it's just too much. It's too big of an ask. I mean, we have thirty days for you to gather eleven committee members. That's a big task in itself, so. I would request to immediately go to the state, work with the state and try to get this thing extended so we, we have time to gather our thoughts.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anybody else? I can add, we have been in conversation with, uh, DWR and State Water Resources Patrol Board. Mr. Smith, uh, since we've been in this predicament, so, uh, learning as much as we can. They both have offered to come here and assist us if we need help. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Robert Smith, one two eight two zero fourteenth Avenue, Hanford. Uh, one question I would have is the committee, many, uh, the committee for the Mid-Kings, would that? Be just members of Mid-Kings or would it be as the whole greater basin?
It'll only be representing the Mid-Kings River GSA.
So members would be only from Mid-Kings?
Correct.
Okay.
And you, you're impacted by the decisions you make, so.
Yep.
We've got to be real careful, so we don't want someone from the outside coming to tell us what we can and can't do. Is that an application you're going to fill it out right now? Ready to go? Okay, anybody else? Hey, do we need to send a formal motion?
I think I've had enough direction from the board that I can move forward now and get a resolution back to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much for that.
Got a job to do. And we should expect that, uh, at, well, let's, but one more thing was application process. Will we discuss that now or the next meeting?
So we, we can discuss it right now. The application process that I anticipate happening would be is that we'll have applications and the resolution ready at your next meeting. Uh, your board would be able to approve the resolution to establish that committee and then, uh, from that point forward. For the next thirty-day window, we'll have it as an open application period, so anybody can submit their applications.
Online?
Online or?
We have.
In person?
We have a process at the county now we use for the water commission, correct?
For all committees.
For all committees.
Committees, okay, but we already have, we already have a, a, a process that we use that works, so.
Yeah.
We'll discuss that and vote that in at the next meeting. What you bring it to us.
Correct, and then following that meeting at your following, uh, GSA meeting, then you'll have a list of candidates to be able to choose and select from, hopefully as anticipated.
We won't have another meeting until at least thirty days. We want to wait till September, well.
That's coming up on your next agenda item.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, we'll move on now to item C, establish a new regular meeting date and time for the Mid-King, uh, River GSA board. Oh, right on top of that, wouldn't I?
You were.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, uh, Chuck, what stops us, if we're going to follow the same, uh, process for someone to apply for an appointment? Meaning that application is already online, they get submitted to clerk of the board, the clerk gets them on agenda. What, what stops us from starting that thirty days today and using, uh, the, the, the current application, if anything, just to, to get that. Interest expressed in wanting to be appointed, so thirty days from now, we, we have those names. Why wait thirty days to come back and say, here's the application and then wait another thirty days?
So, so the resolution that's going to be developed is going to outline specific, specific criteria. Of the committee as well as the formation of that committee and the members and how that's going to be done, the, uh, uh, the application form is going to be. We've got a standard form for the county. Uh, it'll be modified to be, uh, relevant to this particular committee that is being created. And so we don't have that ready yet. The resolution's not here for you to approve to say that there is a committee to apply for. Um, so we need that time to be able to establish that resolution and also modify the form so that then we can open it up.
And I, I would like to add to that, that I want to make sure that we're transparent on all avenues of this. I think the previous board did things behind the scenes and I want to build up confidence in our community that we're not doing something to, uh, limit their ability to perform.
No, and I'm, and, and I think that's obvious that, that point, that point has been expressed and shown by actions. Um, I'm more of the concern, um, of, uh, of, of the timelines, because, uh, just like Mr. Neves said. Um, and if I understood, I don't know if I understood him right, but what I was thinking, when I was looking at those timelines was, uh, so when the day comes. Uh, on the one-year, um, uh, probation, right? Um, if, if I was understanding what Mr. Neves was trying to communicate was that if we ask the state right now, hey, just push that date back. So we're not, so when we don't make that timeline based on these thirty days, thirty days, thirty days. Which if we started today, we're already in January, you know, um, you start looking at the holidays and what gets Xed out. Um, now we're in January, mid-January, that's if we were moving the day, so I don't know how we're going to make that, that one year. So instead of it looking negative and the state saying, one more year, then, then maybe we look at that viewpoint that. We just asked for an extension, so when I get a negative headline.
I agree, but I think we got time to at least come together so we can show a good, good faith effort. They might say, you're doing things fine. Just hold off on that. We have to do a year no matter what. We can't get off before that, so, uh, we could decide that in January or, or February. Okay?
Uh, one thing they can do, Mr. Chair, is, uh, interest, interest emails. Uh, if you're interested in serving, you can do a, uh, uh, pre-alert to that and as well as, uh, sign up for email direct, uh, agendas. So that, that, uh, the public can be more informed, so I think it may not be the, 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 uh, application to serve. But it will certainly, um, create a database for those individuals that are interested in serving.
Right.
And I think that might shorten that, uh, period that you're talking about and it throws a wider net to be able to hopefully capture more people interested.
And, and I like that idea because I know, I know people are looking and saying, whoa, this eleven, uh, person committee is going to fill up, but the reality is. The Board of Supervisors, we're constantly reappointing fifteen people, just reappointing them to this committee because nobody countywide. Applied for this, whether it's cemetery districts, whether it's, uh, the, you know, our ambulance district, whatever, no one applies and so you're. Constantly just reappointing the same people who, who, who are sitting there, so. Uh, and hopefully in this case, this will be easier, but I like, uh, seeing as I did, get that out there and start collecting.
And, and when you do, uh, adopt that resolution and we have a body to apply for. I will be notifying certain agencies throughout the county so that they can help spread the word as well, uh, to try and. Get other, uh, interest in applications in a quick timeframe.
And, and press release too, I would.
Yes, and press release.
Not just the little notice in the classified section that no one's going to see. We've got, we got to go above and beyond on that.
Yeah, P I O is listening right now, so he heard you, so we did. Okay, next item, Chuck.
So the next item is, uh, setting a date for a regular meeting, uh, for your GSA board, the date and time. Um, I thought I would leave it open to you guys to decide what works best for you. Um, I know that you have your board meeting, Board of Supervisors meetings Tuesday mornings. I wasn't sure if you'd want it in the afternoon on a Tuesday, once a month or pick a week and, uh. If we need additional meetings, we can always schedule special meetings in between if need be, if a, an urgency arises, but, um. I'd like to pick at least one, uh, day a month, uh, for a regular meeting.
Right now, we're the third Tuesday. Keep it on the third Tuesday. Mark, you okay with that?
Mr. Chair, I think the only conflict for us is, is the Hanford City Council meetings are on the first and third Tuesdays of every month. So, um, depending on study session materials and things that we may have, um, if we. Two o'clock is going to be tight for me, especially if we get into a, a session that starts at four. Um, might be difficult for me to make that. If there's any way we could maybe instead of either first or third, maybe go, uh, second or fourth. Um, Tuesday, I'm good with. It depends on your scheduling as well.
Yeah, till next month, I'm going on it, yeah, but, uh.
Just for clarification, our board has, um, the Board of Equalization meets the second Tuesday of every month. So we could look at in January, switching that to the third Tuesday, but as of right now, you've already adopted a calendar. So if you want to stick with this date until we can clarify that.
Or go to one o'clock.
Or go to one.
That would give you another hour. Um, I do, I really don't anticipate these meetings lasting, one, once we get the policies in place and get this thing fired back up, I don't expect this to be a two or three-hour meeting. Um, so I would suggest one, one PM, Catherine, is there any?
Um. Are we talking about what, the third Tuesday?
Correct, yes, and then that would be, uh, that would put a burden on the, on the clerk to make sure that that agenda does not run long. But it, it gives, uh, Mark an extra hour, um, you know, to grab a hamburger or whatever and move on to his next assignment. But, um, that might be good enough to get us through this, um, transitional period. Um, and then take a deeper dive and look at it in January when we start doing the master calendars because.
The first, the third Tuesday or month until January decide.
Correct, at, at one o'clock.
At one o'clock.
And currently I look at all of your calendars and it appears everyone is free on that date.
Yeah.
That works, that works well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and that'll get us, again, that'll get us through the rest of this calendar year and it will allow us to in November, December, start evaluating.
Okay, you good with that?
Uh, would you like to take a vote for that?
Uh, yep, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, all those opposed, pick some favor.
Thank you very much.
Third Tuesday, one o'clock.
Got it, the Board of Supervisors meeting light on that third Tuesday. Madam C A, keep our agenda lighter.
She said yes, but she'll do what she wants.
We loaded up.
Okay, item D, conflict of interest code.
All right, I'll.
Thomas.
I'll take that one. As you guys are all likely aware, the government code section eight one zero 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 at SEC. Requires every government agency to adopt a conflict of interest code requiring individuals. Holding designated positions to disclose their financial interests to help avoid conflicts of interest. Before you, as a proposed conflict of interest code for your consideration and for members of the public. Um, who have not already picked one up, there are some copies available in the foyer. Um, the designated positions that, under this code, the designated positions that must disclose are the general manager, the treasurer, general counsel. And consultants, uh, the code requires the general manager and general counsel and consultant. Uh, the code requires the general manager and general counsel and consultants to disclose pursuant to categories one and two and the treasurer to disclose under category one. Each category is more fully described in appendix B, which is part of the code. Members of the Board of Directors are not identified as designated positions because directors are considered public officials who manage public investments and must file a statement of economic interest pursuant to government code section eight, seven, two, zero, zero. With that said, and at this time, I'm asking the board to approve and adopt the proposed conflict of interest code before you. In the alternative, if the board um wants to provide direction for amendments to that code or changes, then I would take that direction and we can bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments? Moved by Supervisor Robinson?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fagundes, Ben, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Richard Fagundes? Mark Kyris?
Yes.
Eight, six in favor.
Uh, one point of clarification, so Diane, does the advisory uh committee have to fill this out as well or will?
When the advisory committee is formed, we'll evaluate whether they have to fill it out. Um, and, and we can amend the code at that time if necessary.
Yeah, because uh that would be the only kind of question, gray area that I would probably see. And I, and unfortunately, I think that document might persuade people not to get involved as if they haven't filled that document out before, especially with landowners and land leases. So um there is some somewhat confidential information. I think we can probably put some kind of language on there where it's, it, it is, remains classified, but I'm not sure how to do.
As a general rule, um, the governmental entities have to designate people as um decision makers when they make or participating in making government decisions. Um, that includes people who vote on a matter, approve a budget, adopt a policy, make purchasing decisions and entering into contracts. So if it's purely advisory and there is no actual material influence, well, I don't, I don't want to say that because I know the board wants that material influence from the public. But if, if they don't defer, if the board doesn't defer its decision-making authority to that body, um, but retains it for itself, then I don't think that they will become subject to a conflict of interest code. But it depends on how it's structured, so we'll have to see um how that comes through and so we can properly designate it.
Just for the record, I'd rather have it constructed to where they would not have to fill out the document.
Good. Okay, right, thank you. Item E, request to release two RFQs, request for qualifications for engineering consulting services to assist the Mid Kings River GSA on an ad need, needed basis. Uh, engineering consultant services to revise the current GSP to mo, to be modified to address only Mid Kings River GSA area.
Yeah, so um if I could go into that a little bit, I, I'm just anticipating things coming forward and RFQs take time to get through. So um I wanted to get authorization to be able to release those. It's not committing you to any finances at this point. Um, but as we go through the process, then we'll come back before you with the recommendation. Um, we are going to need consultants going forward for engineering expertise. Uh, the first item being the engineering consultant services to assist the Mid Kings uh River GSA, I think will be crucial for not just your board, but also the stakeholder committee to be able to have uh input from uh that consultant to be able to help advise them as we move forward. And uh with the uh, with other GSAs in our sub-basin, uh preparing their own singular separate GSPs, uh we're going to have to do the same. So uh we're going to need a consultant onboard to do that as well. And I just wanted to get permission to be able to release that RFQ.
Okay, any questions? Comment?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, Diane, don't take this offensively, but should we add legal to that um as well? Uh, so that this organization, while I, I appreciate county council setting in on the uh business operational side, I'm not really sure the groundwater management side. There are some water um attorneys out there that are very competent um and wondering if we should not um retain a water expert in water law or at least out, have that ability to, to consult with that individual, not a general law attorney like you are.
No offense taken at all. I do recognize that there's different expertise and this is a groundwater sustainability agency with water law at its heart. So if the board wants to retain um a counsel, um, that, that would be very much within its discretion to do so and, and something for the board to consider. Um, we do have Jeffrey Dunn, who is currently advising water law, uh, the county on water law issues. Um, I'm informed that he is available um to also advise the GSA on water issues, whether that would be as an independent um counsel, separate from county council or in conjunction with county council, that, that's something that the board could also consider. And I will, uh, I know that there's one other attorney who has contacted my office since um the Board of Supervisors um assumed the, the seats on the director, the Board of the Directors. And um he's also a water law attorney and has expressed some interest or availability to. So there are others out there who, who could perform the function and um it kind of depends on how the board wants to structure it. Um, we could have discussions about that with Chuck and Curia and, and the board members that, for the discussions today or at a later time.
And, and again, this is just a request for qualifications. Doesn't mean we're going to have to hire them, but I would like to cast a net and just see who's it.
Yeah, and I'm going to second Joe's motion. That way it could be transparent, so don't want to accuse us of pushing something down someone else's.
Correct.
Agenda down someone's throat, so gives an opportunity for everybody to have a say in it. Uh, can we, want to vote on that or just nod?
I think I just needed the direction on that one, so.
Everybody's okay with that?
Let's, let's vote, so we have, I want to keep it cleaner.
Okay.
Just having.
All those in uh favor?
Okay.
Well, I got a motion and a second.
But we're, and we're going to go from two RF, request for uh qualifications to three. A consultant, an engineer and an attorney.
And I'm okay with it. And I second.
And that, that's, yeah, that, that was the motion.
By Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Verboen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Mark Kyris?
Yes.
I've got it on my screen.
Six in favor, so we'll look forward to, will we have something next? It'll probably be two months, huh? Time to get a request out.
Oh, I'm going to move on the requests.
It'll take like fourteen days or thirty days.
Because it takes at least thirty days to get applications in.
Have it on the agenda next meeting, we can discuss it if there's an issue.
I can give you an update at the next meeting as well, how progress is going.
Okay, uh, we'll move on now to item F, which is consider appointment of a new treasurer. Do we have anything to be treasurer over?
Huh huh. Um.
Someone's got to keep, someone's got to open the bills.
Debt manager.
There's going to be debt and there is also going to be oncoming bills. Um, I was unsure of your board's desire for whom uh you would like to appoint as new treasurer for Mid Kings River GSA, but I've spoken with Eric Rena with, who is the Director of Finance uh for the county to see if he'd be willing to serve in that capacity um for the Mid Kings GSA. And he said that he would be willing to help uh if your board desires it. So I thought I would open it up to your board.
So a little clarification to uh Mr. Kyris, Eric is our Director of Finance for the County Kings. He's in the audience today. Well, Eric, thank you for coming. Uh, you're willing to take this on?
Yep.
Okay.
Move to a point, no pay.
Second?
Second.
Hey, if he wouldn't have showed up, it'd have been worse. We wouldn't even talked about you.
I, somebody took my railroad whistle, but I'll have my rail wood whistle one of these days and.
We're all good with that?
You got railroaded into that one.
You want to, you want to vote?
Yes.
Matter. Uh, we have a motion and a second by, uh, motion by Supervisor Nev, second by Verboen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Mark Kyris?
Yes.
The favor, thank you very much.
Just for the record, that's other duties as requested.
Okay, we'll move on now to board member announcements and reports. Uh, does anybody have anything to announce? Well, Thomas. Nothing. I'll just uh make a uh notation, you know, this is temporary for the County of Kings and the temporary for the Mid King GSA. We hope that in twenty-four months, we have a, a nice board that can handle this from here on out. Uh, this is just to protect us from the state coming in, taking over. So we look forward to all your guys' participation uh to come together with this and, and move it forward. And, you know, I don't really want to be here as a GSA holder, as a Board of Supervisors uh in the future, but uh we'll stay here as long as we can to get it under control. And uh we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn and we'll see you uh on the seventeenth at one PM. Thank you for coming.